I would like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, February 6, 2019. All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who is absent and excused. And this is the time in the meeting when we ask if there are any non-agenda public comments. And it looks like we have none tonight. And with that, we'll go ahead-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If you'd like, at some point in the agenda, we do have the council liaison here, Deputy Mayor Doer, so she can make a few remarks to the commission as well as talk about your new members. So we could do that at this point or at a later point in the agenda if you prefer.
Okay, would the deputy mayor have a preference with the one that is?
I can do it now.
Okay, this would be a great time. Thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight.
I was worried I'd have to go up to the podium. I haven't made it recently. Oftentimes, I have Wednesday night meetings, but I have been watching. Thank goodness I can watch YouTube and keep up with what you guys are up to. We had a pretty lengthy conversation at council last night, and I just thought I'd maybe update you and give you an opportunity to think about things and give me some feedback. The council liaison thing has only been going on for a year. And unlike with planning commission, the other boards and commissions aren't taped. And so if council members aren't able to make it or something comes up, there's really no way for them to catch up, so to speak. And so we talked about a couple of ideas, which is that we could, as liaison, maybe reach out and talk to anybody on a board or commission or just like coffee or a phone call with the chair. Another idea that council member Zorn's had was maybe some sort of, I don't know what it looks like yet, but maybe some sort of non-staff-created event where we just kind of get together and talk about things that are important to you, things that you think we should be addressing that we aren't. I mean, I think the goal is for us to have a closer relationship with our boards and commissions than we do right now. I think a couple of things have happened where maybe the boards and commissions weren't quite sure where council was going and did some work that then turned out not to be relevant to where we were headed. And we really want to avoid that kind of thing and honor the time and commitment that you have. So we're looking for ideas, but if you have thoughts on that, feel free to reach out to me. And then we voted on boards and commission appointments. And I think Laura said, for the first time ever, we only had one round. We didn't have to vote more than once. Now, that being said, there were only two boards and commissions that didn't have the exact same number of applicants as their openings. So, but we're excited. You have three, well, your chair is returning, David Velez, so thank you very much. And we have, in the audience, Kirsten Kred, who will be joining you. And he has a background in geology. So I think his professional experience will be really exciting to add to your base of knowledge. And then the other one, his name is Brad. I don't know how to pronounce it. Pace Drop? And Mayor Rayum knows him, I guess, professionally. And so he knows a lot about water and stormwater, those types of issues. So I think that would also be a great addition for you guys. And I just wanted to briefly mention, we'll be missing Commissioner Cecil. And really thankful for the time you put in. And I know that your professional knowledge will be missed. I've been told by several people on the commission. So, yeah, so thank you for devoting your time. And with that, I'll let you get on with your meeting. But feel free to call or email if you have thoughts about ways to strengthen the relationship between council and the commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Very much appreciate you joining us and those ideas. So, yeah, please reach out to Davina with any ideas you have. With that, we have some minutes to approve, so let everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes. I did have one quick question with regards to the, it says February 12 on it. It's kind of a small detail, but I think it's February 11. Sorry, page 2, reports from staff at the very top, on February 12, 2009. I think it should be 11. So, so once you all have had a chance to review it, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of the minutes as written. Would the date change?
Seconded.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes from January 23rd, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. No new business this evening, I do not believe. Okay, and there's not a public hearing tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into the study session. Tonight's study session is small cell wireless concealment code amendments. And it looks like we will start out with Michael Catterman, Director of Community Development. And I guess, Michael, you'll be introducing some of the people that we have in our audience tonight.
Yes, I will. I may let them do more detailed introductions, but we have representatives here from, I believe, AT&amp;T and Verizon. Is that correct? Did I miss anybody? So we invited them to come and speak this evening and talk about the type of equipment that would be included in the regulations that we're starting to discuss with you tonight. So Bruce and I are going to go through a brief introduction. And then I believe that they have a presentation as well that they will go through. What we want to do is give you a little bit of background about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So I have an abbreviated version of a presentation that was given to the city council back in January by our outside attorney on this particular issue, Scott Snyder with Ogden Murphy Wallace. They're consulting with the city, and several cities actually, on small cell wireless facilities. So we're, a lot of us are learning all of this together at the same time. So if you'll bear with me. The main thing that we want to focus on this evening is, I'm not going to go through the entire presentation because it's really about the interim code that the council adopted back in January. And the purpose of the work of the planning commission right now is really focused specifically on the design and concealment standards that we will be adding to the code for the special design district, which is an area generally the downtown. And Bruce will talk some more about that. So we're really zeroing in on that. And that's Section 12, 11, 100 in the interim code that I think was included in your packet. So my apologies for the length of the packet. We normally don't like to hit you with that much information. But it will be background information as we go into the work on the permanent code, which will come after we get through the designed standards. So I will try to get through this as judiciously as possible. If you have questions as we're going along, please don't hesitate. So the main reason for the small cell wireless, just part of it is an evolution of technology, but a lot of that is driven by the fact that the amount of demand on wireless technology has increased tremendously. As you can see, this is from AT&amp;T. The wireless usage in megabytes has increased more than 150,000% since 2007. And a lot of that has to do with not just the number of users, but the type of data that we're using. So there's a lot of streaming data. That requires a lot more demand on the system. We have a large macro system in place that covers larger areas. The small cells help to reinforce that and to increase the strength and the capacity within those macro areas. And I'm assuming some of our speakers are going to talk some more to that this evening because they know a lot more about it than I do. So this is just an illustration of what we're talking about in terms of increasing the capacity, the intensity within those existing macro site networks. You can see the macro covers a much larger area. These are typically the monopoles that you see, rather tall with several antenna devices on them, or they may be mounted on buildings or other taller structures. So these are much smaller. They work within that network. And they're located at a much lower height, and they need more of them in order to provide that coverage. So this gives you an idea. So you can see the macro cell example. And then small cell typically, at least initially, what we anticipate is that these will be located primarily on utility poles in public right-of-way. And that's where the FCC regulation comes into play and why we're scrambling to get all of this in place in time. So it's more than just a small box antenna. So the actual antenna is at the very top of the pole. Then there's all of the other equipment that has to go along with that to handle the data, the power. And it also has to be a certain distance from power lines, from other utilities that may be working off of those poles. So there's a lot that goes into the consideration here. Basically, the genesis of this was back, I think, in 2016, when this technology was starting to come into play. The city started preparing for that. The technology has been changing. The rules have been changing. So we are trying to make sure that we at least keep up with that and hopefully stay enough ahead of it that we can get everything in place. The main driver of what we're doing this evening and over the next couple of months is the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, rule that went into effect January 14. So the council adopted the interim ordinance on January 8. So we were in place for that. We have our application processes and franchise agreements. All of that is in place and ready to go when we get an application for one of these small cell facilities. There are also some changes that affect the larger cell facilities that are incorporated into that interim ordinance. So there's a little more to it. But again, tonight, we're really focused on the small cell and the design standards in particular. We have until April 14 to put design standards in place. So that's the timeframe that we're on. Tonight, we're introducing that to the planning commission. We have tentatively scheduled the public hearing and the draft code amendments for your consideration at your next meeting on the 27th of this month. And we are currently scheduled to go to council with that recommendation and ordinance on just those design standards on April 2. So we'll be a little bit ahead of the deadline on that. But that's the general schedule we're looking at for that. There is an appeal pending of the FCC rule. And that's currently, I believe it was consolidated and put into just the Ninth Circuit. Is that?
In the Ninth.
In the Ninth Circuit. So it's, there were two appeals filed in different courts. It's been consolidated now into just the Ninth Circuit. But I don't know that we have an idea of when we'll get a decision on that. So we're proceeding on the basis that all of this goes into place and we have to be ready for it. So definition of a small cell, and there's very detailed definition in the federal regulations, and we're incorporating what we need to in our code. Mounted on structures 50 feet or less in height, including the antenna, or mounted on structures no more than 10% taller than other adjacent structures. And keep in mind, structures could also mean buildings. It's basically any kind of structure. As I said, what we anticipate, at least initially, is typically these will be on some, on utility poles, light poles, those types of things. But they could also be mounted on houses, commercial buildings, existing monopoles, you know, of any variety of things in the future. And there are limitations on that in terms of height, then also the antennas themselves and how that's measured in terms of the volume. So the last two are required in addition to one of the first three. And all that is incorporated into our interim code. So a couple of things that are important to keep in mind. The definition changed from what we could and could not preclude. So local regulation, a lot of local regulation on these has been preempted by the FCC rule. The previous definition said that we could not do anything that would interfere with the, I'm lost now on what the previous one was. It's a higher standard now than it was before. Let me just say that. Because before, it had to do with the coverage. They had to demonstrate that it was filling a gap in coverage. Like, that's what I was looking for. Now, it's, we cannot basically materially inhibit anything that would affect their ability to compete. So it's a little different standard, a little less ability to regulate that. Also changes the definition of co-location. Previously, that meant it was located with another similar type of wireless facility. Now, co-location on an existing structure, it doesn't have to have anything on there now. It means that it could be a pre-existing structure. It could be the first thing on that structure, but it's because the structure is there, it's considered co-location now for definition purposes. So tonight, as I said, we're really focusing on the aesthetic requirements that we would be applying, particularly in the downtown. So under the regulations, these have to be reasonable. We can't regulate these differently than we would any other utility in that right-of-way. They have to be objective, meaning they have to be clear. It can't be just, well, that looks good. I think we'll accept that. But that's true of any regulation we do. So that's nothing different. And we have to publish in advance. So again, we're working under a deadline of April 14 for that. So the draft ordinance that you received, it references this design district. This is in the city's design standards manual that was recently updated. The end of the year, we updated every year. This is where we have special illumination, streetlights, if you will, the decorative type, as well as some other different types that we use on the different streets that are designated here within this area outlined in green. So this is what we are using because this is where the city has made a huge investment in design in our downtown, not only in regulations of private development, but also in terms of the public improvements that we've made to the streets, to the streetlights, utility upgrades. We're talking millions and millions of dollars here. So the city has a significant investment in this area. And Bruce is going to talk a little bit more about that, a little bit. So again, just a few things to keep in mind in terms of what we're going to be operating under here. The other thing that the rule does is it sets very short timelines for us to approve these facilities when they come in. We have 60 days to approve a small cell wireless facility that is on an existing pole, or 90 days if it's on a new pole. And that includes everything that you see up there. So it includes the franchise agreement, as well as any administrative review, the design variation, and any SEPA or critical areas review that we might have to do as part of that. So we're working under a very tight timeline there. There may be some exceptions to that. I think that's still to be determined. But for now, this is what we're operating under. And again, that's really more background information at this point. But just keep in mind that that includes the design aspect, the aesthetic issues and design standards that we'd be talking about. So that's why it's important that we get those in place and that they're very clear in terms of what the expectations are. And that's one of the reasons we invited the providers to come tonight and talk to us about what the equipment looks like, how they envision that being mounted on different facilities so that, you know, we're working with them to get something that's workable. So just some key concepts here that come out of the interim ordinance. The shot clocks and the safe harbors, those are the time limits I talked about, the 60 and 90 days, the consolidated review process, having to do all of those things within that time period, treating the wireless the same as any other utilities, adopting those standards, concealment standards. This would go into that section of the interim ordinance and the final ordinance. Some other revisions. Division 1 has to do with the existing city standards for the macro wireless facilities. So some updates that had to be done as part of that. And then the federal standard of effective prohibition, that's the one that I was trying to explain to you just a little bit ago and probably didn't do a very good job of. But all of that is being incorporated into our new code. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce to talk about generally what we're discussing in terms of design standards.
Thank you, Michael. As Director Catterman identified, we do have an area within the city that has a special design district provision. And this is the map within the Bothell Design and Construction Standards that delineates that area. And it's basically the downtown suburb area with some very specific provisions with each road area. And if you look at this map, you can see that there are some things called secondary street, fabric street, and primary street. Those are all things from the downtown suburb area plan provisions. And essentially, what happens is that there's a table within the design standards that gets very specific on the road section and which of these specific types of light fixtures will be applied. And in red, you can see, here's detail number D310. And basically, that says this type of light fixture will be applied on a primary street designation between a certain area or upon a certain street. And it's not just necessarily one individual street. You can see, this is on Bothell Way Northeast and Main Street. Another style is on Bothell Way Northeast, 185th Street, 98th Avenue, Popkinie. There's a lot of these kind of provisions. Sometimes, we even get specific to identify that it's only a certain section of a specific roadway where this individual light fixture will be installed. And that goes on along these concepts. Now, this is a little bit more of a traditional swing arm style of fixture. And you can see, again, we've identified through a very lengthy process where these specific types of light fixtures will be applied. And you can see that it's got the street designation and, again, the exact section of the roadway where it will be applied. Finally, this is the last fixture I want to show you. Again, all the way down here to the primary road. And again, a little bit different style of fixture. And each of these has got a little bit different appearance. That was all purposely crafted within the Bothell Downtown Suburb area plan to have a specific feel for individual different streets. These are the kinds of facilities that we're going to have to work very heavily with the providers on to come up with how we can do the concealment so that these fixtures still look as if they belong out there and they aren't affected in a way that's negative to this community. So that finishes my discussion point. If you have any questions from me or Michael, you can ask them. Or we can turn it over to the providers and let them have a discussion too.
This time, yeah. Roger.
Thanks, Bruce. I guess one question that comes to mind is, you know, we're talking about streetlight poles. And maybe we'll be able to hear from some of our visitors here. But is that the only thing we're looking at in terms of where to locate these? Are buildings a viable option or are they comparable, that kind of thing? So maybe I'm just throwing out a little seed for you guys for when you give your presentation there. So, thank you.
And I think they will talk about that. From, just from a regulatory standpoint, the FCC rule really applies to those things that are in the public right-of-way. So if something is proposed on a private building, then we would regulate that, just like we would any other cell facility.
So would the standards, are you saying that we wouldn't have to make standards, these kinds of standards, if they were on private buildings or private facilities?
Correct. We could, whatever design standards we have in place-
Maybe more of the building code, maybe, or something?
Building code or any other design standards we might have in place that would affect anything that's put on a building.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I mean, it may be that out of this process, we identify some additional things that we might want to put in place for cell facilities that are located on private property.
So you made reference that these could not be regulated any differently than any other uses of utilities in the right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
And from what I see in these standard designs, they don't really accommodate anything other than the light. Are there other uses that are on these poles?
So there could be things like opticon. They're typically on traffic lights, but there may be some other things like that that could be located on some of these standards. But you're right. And from a practical standpoint, there aren't a whole lot of other utilities, particularly on the decorative standards that are going to be placed on those. It's really more of the typical utility poles, the wooden or the metal poles that may support a streetlight, for example, more of the, there's a term for the arm.
Swing arm.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what I saw in some of the examples in the package, more of the standard utility pole, opposed to these, which have a significant decorative element to them.
And I think in terms of our code, we would first direct them to one of the more traditional utility poles first, you know. And if that's not feasible, we want to make sure we have something that can work with the decorative poles as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I'm interested to see what would work with these downtown light fixtures because I think that's one of the huge benefits to the downtown renovation. So trying to marry the new technology with kind of a classic look is going to be difficult, but I'm excited to see what our options are on camouflaging it a little bit.
So are we.
And Freddie, is there any reason why we're not talking about the design standards outside of the downtown area, Canyon Park, that sort of area?
And that may be something that we look at in the future as we develop more specific design standards for Canyon Park. That is one that we did talk about with our consulting attorney. But we haven't, we don't really have a special designation for that area at this time. And we need to be able to do that as part of the regulations, is my understanding.
Yeah, I would be concerned about what may happen over the, I mean, everything seems to be moving pretty quickly. And I'd be concerned what happens outside of this area here. I would hate for something to be installed that doesn't conform or doesn't look nice and has a negative impact to the aesthetic outside of the downtown area.
Yes, and I think that's a concern that I heard the council raise as well as staff has brought up with our consulting attorneys. I should add, and I didn't mention this in my presentation, that we're not going to have design standards just in the downtown. There are other design standards that are already written into the ordinance. And we may decide that, you know, some of those could be beefed up a little bit. And those would apply citywide within the right-of-way. And those do a pretty good job of making sure that they blend in, you know, that they're not wires all over there internal to the pole where that's possible, those types of things. And those are the regulations that the attorney, working with the providers and working with other jurisdictions and understanding the court cases and appeals and everything that are underway right now, that they feel are probably best to include at this point. Not to say we couldn't revisit that in the future. Again, a lot of moving parts on this as we're working on it.
And then I have another question, which is, do we have any existing design standards around, like, municipal wireless systems? Like, I know there's, like, existing wireless facilities for private networks that I see throughout a city. Is there any existing standards on those as well?
For the macro facilities?
No, like, the more private, you see them all the time, right? There's little tiny antennas that are attached to existing poles.
Oh, okay.
Is there any standards around those? I believe those are public use, private network, private, let's see, public network, publicly-owned private networks used for, like, safety.
Emergency response and those types of things, yes. I'm not aware of standards that we have for those, Bruce. Do you know?
No, I haven't. I haven't been familiar with anything that would involve a standard on that.
And to be clear, this is a completely separate wireless design standard we're applying. So we would be designing this just for the wireless providers. And that other system would have some other standards that may or may not apply.
It would be a separate set of standards, yes.
And I have just a kind of general comment that I know may not have any bearing to here tonight, but I don't know if you all want to speak to it. You already kind of did in your introduction, Michael. And that was, that's really, really well done. Maybe it's something, you know, people who are representing the providers, it's probably really a little bit frustrating for cities to have to be under the gun for this. I know there's, it sounds like there's a peel process still out there. But I'm trying to, just in short, kind of understand the impetus for, that made it so that, you know, cities had to instigate these requirements so quickly. I'd say it'd be nice to have a better understanding of that. You know, we're in a study session, so we can kind of just, you know, but I don't-
And any of the providers are welcome to speak to that tonight. And I know Scott Snyder spoke to that at the city council meeting. I didn't include that this evening. I was going to save that. Actually, we'll have Scott Snyder here for the public hearing on the 27th. And then we'll probably have him back when we start work on the permanent ordinance as well. So I would say he can probably address it much more so from his experience at that time, if that would be okay.
That's great, thanks.
Are there any current pending applications you're aware of?
No, not that we have currently.
Thanks.
Couple of quick ones. Do you anticipate any from between now and April? Or maybe that's a question again for the, okay, so maybe that's a question too for you.
I think we've asked that question, as I understand it. I think Scott's been talking to the providers about that. And there's nothing imminent that we're aware of at this time. Now, again, that may change. Maybe they have some information they can provide this evening. But we have some standards already within the interim ordinance. So it's a matter of getting something in place by the 14th of April.
Okay, so we were talking just a little bit ago about standards that we have either in place or in the hopper for areas outside of the downtown. Are those in place or are those part of the interim ordinance? Or are those part of this same effort?
Yeah, I was not speaking to those areas in terms of small cell wireless. We have design standards for other parts of the city.
Gotcha, thank you.
Great. Okay, Bruce?
Good evening. My name's-
Okay, good evening. My name's Kim Allen. I'm with the Wireless Policy Group. I was hired as a consultant to help with the rollout of small wireless facilities in the Pacific Northwest. Fair disclosure, I've known your mayor for a very long time. I used to be on the Redmond City Council for 11 years. Before that, I was a planning commissioner for Redmond. And I, now in my new home in Kitsap County, I'm currently chairing the planning commission. So watch out, this can become a lifelong avocation if you let it. With me tonight is my associate, Ed Verizon.
Good evening. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless.
Before we start the presentation, we had a couple of really specific questions from the commissioners. And I think that we could address those in pretty short order. I know that Commissioner Kiernan was talking about, how do we, you know, these poles are pretty decorative and specialized. How would we attach things to them that would retain the, the look of the pole? And we also have, as you'll see in the presentation, we have some options for complimentary standalone poles that would just be wireless only, that would be designed to complement and match that design that you have without having to deal with the light fixtures and, and impact the poles that you have. So that's an option. There's also, as I drove through downtown before the meeting, there are wood utility poles that are, you know, a little bit off some of these, these specialized streets that, that could be utilized as well. So we, we have a full range of options that we would explore with the city, because we really do want to keep the aesthetic values that your community has identified for this downtown district. And I think that there was another question, oh, just, I think that Mike might have, might have said that these could go on houses. We will never put one of these on a single-family home. Usually, we're not allowed to put wireless on single-family dwellings at all, just on, in the other part of the code. And the other piece of this is that these really don't work well on private structures, because they don't have the fiber and the power and the vertical infrastructure there already that, that we need to facilitate that. So we're not going to be putting them on your neighbor's house. Just wanted to, to kind of clear that up. And I think there was one more question about the Canyon Park area from Commissioner Monroe Cook. And in those areas, we will work to make our designs complementary to the poles that you have there right now. We hope to show you some really good designs that, you know, but we will, we work individually, neighborhood by neighborhood, to, to design the small cells for that neighborhood that fit in with whatever the vertical infrastructure is there. So with that, I think Devendra's going to kick us off and work us through the program.
Thank you. First off, thank you for your interest in small wireless facility. We're very excited to, at the possibility of bringing small cell technology to the city of Bothell. I'm going to walk you through a quick presentation. Kim and I will tag team and go back and forth, and then we'll open up for a Q and A session whenever we're ready for that. So smartphones have changed our lives, and now wireless is more than just smartphones. Let's think about how smartphones has changed our lives. For me personally, it's changed it in two ways, connecting with my job and connecting with my family. Family, video chatting and social media, being able to connect with them long-range. My family's actually in Florida, so that helps out quite a bit. Even locally, connecting with my wife and keeping in contact with my kids' daycare and our doctor appointments and things like that wirelessly, that's a huge benefit to my life. Secondly is work, keeping in contact with my work through email, and even traffic and weather updates, so I don't get stuck in any snowstorms. Examples of how the wireless industry adds value to our lives, well, first public safety, first responders rely heavily on this mobile infrastructure to perform their primary job functions. In terms of transportation, better automation for traffic signals. Verizon can help with Vision Zero, which is zero traffic fatalities, routing cars and pedestrians away from congestion and accidents, also clearing the day-to-day congestion by allowing folks to work from home more, because they have that robust infrastructure, they can accomplish that. Home automation, so things like smart doorbells, refrigerators, security cams, and even smart lights. Imagine going to the grocery and communicating with your fridge to know that you need more milk, you know? Or the doorbell ringing and you're able to see that it's just the FedEx AI leaving a parcel, or if it's something a little bit more urgent. You know, things like that, automating your home with the help of this wireless technology. And lastly, smart health, remote doctor visits, you know, for those freak snowstorms where you're, you're snowed in but still need to talk to a doctor, you can do that with this technology. Connected medical devices such as your insulin pump, pill bottles that tell you the last time you've taken your medicine, and other devices that transmit to medical offices. The wireless industry has changed our lives in many ways. If you want to jump in at any time.
Yep.
Okay, great. So we in the wireless industry are feeling the need for capacity increases every single day. This may not be something you experience on a daily basis. Some of our current trends, mobile traffic has increased 40 times since 2010. We consider it as to be tremendous growth. Fifty-two percent of American homes now are only, are wireless only. And 80% of 911 calls originate from a wireless device. Like I said, those first responders, they do rely heavily on, on these wireless networks. So what does insufficient capacity means? We're all familiar with the bars on your phone that tell you the network coverage and show you how strong that coverage is. Capacity problem happens when there's more traffic that the system can handle. So think of a highway with way too many cars. A real-world example of how this affects you is you're watching a movie at 11:00 PM at night on your favorite streaming network. Everything is running fine, but you decide to finish that movie the next day at 6:00 PM, a peak hour. You're going to find that your, your data is loading a little bit more slowly, and you might even have glitchy video problems. That's one of the hallmarks of classic capacity issues, things like slow data speeds, increased video loading times, disrupted calls, or dropped calls, and general connection problems. Another good example is a parade, a park on the day of the parade. There's a large number of the community shows up, and the capacity is now maxed. So you're having trouble posting that video or picture, or even calling your friends to meet up in the park. We-
Even McMenamins on a Saturday afternoon-
Even McMenamins.
In the summertime. Will overtax the network.
We build for our customers in those peak location and community events. It's also a great use of the way small cell can be used to target to our customers. So we keep building. Our plan is to utilize every tool in our toolbox. And this includes 5G ultra-wideband. So what is 5G? 5G is the fifth generation cellular network, more efficient use of existing frequencies plus new frequencies, which will equal a faster network with more capacity. These new frequencies, new frequencies will be how we deploy that ultra-wideband. If you're interested in more information on this, PC Magazine, a third party, did a fantastic article that you can find at the link or the address written at the bottom of this slide. So our network evolution started off with 1G, and that gave us voice, the ability to talk wirelessly. Next came 2G, that gave us the ability to text message. Then 3G, data and apps, which, and we picked up a lot of speed at that point. Then 4G came about, which powered the remote controls of our lives, which is what I call our wireless device these days, because we can do everything from it. Blazing data transfer rates, it gave us rise to the connected devices and services that we rely on and also enjoy today. Now, 5G, the fifth generation of wireless, this means quicker downloads, more powerful network, massive impact on how we live, work, and play. That means autonomous cars, smart communities, industrial IoT, which is Internet of Things, and immersive education. All this will rely on the 5G network. And now, just to clarify, that bar on the right says 10 gigabyte, gigabits per second. The range is 1 to 10 gigabits per second is what we're looking for, for our 5G network.
And the 5G network will be deployed on the same infrastructures as the 4G small cells that you're going to be looking at today. They'll be perhaps adding an antenna and a radio box to, to an existing structure, but Verizon will be rolling out both 4G LTE to deal with the existing capacity problems that we have, as well as 4G, 5G combinations, because 5G is going to be kind of backwards compatible with 4G for quite some time. We're still deploying 3G, just because some phones still utilize that technology. So it will be additive, but use the same basic form factor that we're going to show you tonight.
Yes, that's correct. 5G will be additive, and a 4G small cell network will be the backbone that that 5G infrastructure is built on. So, so what is small cell, small cells?
I think Michael did a good job on that one.
He did. I can skip over-
No, you got a lot right. It was great.
So I'll just say quickly, macros right now are the backbone of our wireless network, and small cell serves to fill in those nooks and crannies and really create a more robust system. There's a natural limit as to how many macros we can add. The closer they get, the radio waves literally cancel each other out. So this is where small cell gets to enter the picture. There are lower power solutions, smaller installs at the targeted constraints in our network. The lower power means that there's no interference with that macro coverage layer. So this is, this is how we're able to add that capacity to that coverage layer, to build that robust network. This slide shows a great interaction between those two.
Yeah, the macro network is going to stay. One of the questions we get frequently is, is this going to replace towers? And it, and it won't. The macro network supplies the basic overall broad coverage for your community. It's backed up by generators, so that in the event of a power loss, it will continue to function. Unlike these, Verizon specifically has decided not to put battery backup on the small cell facilities to minimize the visual profile of them that would add mass. So while you might not be able to stream a video in a power outage in a windstorm, you still can place calls and texts.
So why deploy those small cells? Well, a lot of it is, has to do with gaps in coverage caused by external factors. So terrain challenges are one of them. So water, hills, vegetation, they all affect coverage. Small cells can help us fill in those nooks and crannies in our neighborhoods that the macros just can't reach. Another is buildings. Buildings provide a lot of shadowing that sometimes block out our signal. Well, small cell gives us the option to reinforce that signal from the ground level.
And placing the small cells in the right-of-way, oftentimes, most times in a more urban area, our coverage objective is in these buildings to get additional capacity to users in these buildings. So having the small cells in the right-of-way allows us to point our antennas toward the coverage objective. When you mounted down a building, you can't cover that building because the signal propagates straight out.
And then also, large residential area, sometimes it's just not appropriate to put a large cell tower in the middle of a neighborhood. Small cell offers alternative solutions to get coverage to that neighborhood. So we can now compare some antenna sizes, just to get a little bit more hands-on with what the material actually is. A typical macro antenna is six to eight feet in height. Typical small cell antenna is approximately two feet, three cubic feet in, in width, girth, size.
Volume.
Volume, thank you.
And, and the macro cell antennas are typically what you see on the top of the monopoles, with the big top hats with multiple antennas. And that's the size of it. So small, small cell antennas are much smaller. We typically deploy between two and four on a, on a pole, closely mounted to the pole, on a standard utility pole.
And I've, I've heard, because I haven't seen one of these in person, but I've heard that typically they're, or comparatively, they're about the size of a, of a small kitchen trashcan. Is that a fair analogy?
Yeah, typically it is. That, that particular one is two feet in height. I think it's, I think it's 18 inches wide and about nine inches deep. So that's, that's the size. We paint those antennas to match the color of the pole, as well as the equipment box, to minimize the visual impacts as much as we can. But it looks very similar to the other things that you'll find on a standard utility pole.
There's some more info on here, but I'll go over that on the next slide. So these are two full installs. On the right, we have a macro. On the left, we have a small cell. On the right, the macro has three to 12 large antennas. We said that they're six to eight feet tall. And on the ground, there's going to be four to six large cabinets. It's located on an adjacent property. In this scenario, they're actually screened behind that fence in the background, so you can't see them from the street, but it does take up that real estate. On the small cell side, one to four small antennas, less than three cubic feet in volume, a small radio enclosure about halfway up the pole, and there's no ground cabinets. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so small cells are deployed in groups. We often call these clusters or polygons. So a typical polygon project will consist of about 20 to 40 nodes-
Or poles.
No, or poles, ranging from about 200 to 2,000 feet apart from each other. It's important to note here that each node is an individual facility, an individual site, standalone. They're spaced in a way that once one drops off, the other one picks up. And the install type, you see these four different install types, is determined by the existing or right-of-way infrastructure and the network needs.
Yeah, these are, the different designs are really a, a choice by the RF engineers as to what the particular solution is for that, for that place, taking into account topography, interference, vegetation, and also the type of signal that's, that's being used and, and deployed there.
So there's three main components that make up a small cell. The antennas, the radios, and the broadband unit, or the computer. Now, this computer is actually located back at a, a nearby macro facility or a centralized hub. So it's not actually in this picture. You won't see that in any of our pictures. The rest are just associated equipment. So your dark fiber, your coax, your conduits, your power, and your power disconnect.
And, and that's an actual installation. This was a very early installation in Seattle, in the Green Lake area. This is on a Seattle City Light Pole. And one of the key distinctions is that the primary provider for your community, Puget Sound Energy, will not allow a mid-pole attachment right now. We have to extend the height of the pole by about six to eight feet to clear the upper lines to place the antennas. That's their policy as the pole owner. So that would be different from this particular picture.
And, and just, just to add on to that, so one of the things to keep in mind is, the city of Bothell does not own most of the poles that we're talking about here. They're, they're owned either by PSE or Snohomish County PUD. There are a few that the city owns, but most of them are owned by the providers. So it's, in terms of the design and the standards that, that Ms. Allen was just talking about, those are their standards, and they, they will enforce those. And we will just make sure that whatever is submitted to the city is in compliance, is okayed by the owner of the pole.
In a case where you've got underground wiring, how are you accommodating that?
In, in neighborhoods where everything has been undergrounded, typically, light standards remain in those neighborhoods, and we would do a light standard deployment there. In the event that we have a wood utility pole attachment, and the neighborhood then later undergrounds, we would move that attachment, take it off the pole. We would be required by the franchise agreement with the city to do that, to relocate it at our cost to a light standard installation instead.
So let's go through some photo examples now. I have a lot of pictures here, so we're going to go through them rather quickly, but I wanted to have them here for your reference. This one is actually located in Ballard, in case you wanted to actually get out there and put your eyes on an actual installation. I will have addresses for some of these later on in this presentation deck, so you can, I can get you exactly there. Here's another one, located in Ballard. This one blends into the tree landscape.
And once those trees leaf out, it should be virtually invisible.
If I can ask a quick question there. I've, I've been around long enough to remember when we started regulating dish antennas. And one of the issues then was vegetation. Like, we couldn't require vegetation around them because that interfered with the signal received. Are these affected at all by vegetation?
Yes, they are. They would be affected by vegetation, especially dense vegetation. Those in, in the Ballard farmers market are deciduous trees. They lose their leaves for most of the year. And, and it's not, it's not a significant issue. We might request some, some tree trimming around the antennas. And we certainly would not be able to plant, like, a screening tree next to it to, to, because that would block the signal too.
So these are three nodes from Polygon in Bellevue titled Archer Line. It's a 15-node polygon.
And these are as-built drawings. These are not photo simulations. This is one of Verizon's first deployments in the metro Seattle area.
Right. So here's Archer Line again. These are, I believe, all deployed on PSE poles?
Yeah, PSE wood poles. And they're all, as you know, the city- Yeah, PSE wood poles, and they're all, um, as you know, the city of Bellevue had some very exacting standards for us. Uh, that was our, our training wheels, uh, in our first deployment. And so you'll note that the, you know, we, they closely matched the paint color to the type of, uh, to the color of the wood. Um, you don't see a lot of sloppy wiring hanging out. Uh, we definitely want to minimize the visual impact to, to every extent possible. And these, this deployment, the Archer Line deployment was in residential neighborhoods.
Here's Archer Line, a couple more.
Kind of gives you a, a flavor of the different types of poles that you find out there too. Some that have a luminaire, some that do not, some that are combination distribution transmission poles.
Can I, um, a, a brief question? What is the range of a macro installation and what is the range in, in terms of a, um, a small cell wireless?
Macros, macros can provide coverage on the order of miles. And a typical small cell will be anywhere from 200 to 2,000 feet, depending on the topography and the other constraints.
Thank you.
Uh, this is, this is also Archer Line, however, uh, take a look at the photo on the right. Instead of using panel antennas, there is a canister at the top, so the types of insulation can vary.
Yeah, the canister, uh, is, uh, an interesting part of shrouding. The one caveat that we have is that 5G antennas are so sensitive that they cannot be shrouded. They can't even be painted. We're working with the manufacturers to develop colored materials to create the antennas from. But, uh, but any kind of blockage would, um, would significantly impair the signal. So we're working on, on designs that will minimize the impact of those antennas. They, they will be small panel antennas, uh, attached to, um, attached to the pole as well. I think we've got some pictures in the deck of the four, 4G, 5G.
Right.
Got a question here.
So are all the installations we're looking at right now, they're all 4G?
All 4G.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I have a quick additional question while on those slides. Do we expect, um, do you expect m- many of the 5G, I guess, antennas, uh, the macro, micro scale to be closer to the pole or smaller than those we see in that picture? Because I, in the materials I was reading through, it seemed like a lot of the stuff we were talking about, those would be quite a bit larger, I think, than what we had suggested with regards to how far they could be from the poles or how big they could be. But we can get into that more later. I guess, do you see them getting smaller or bigger or further out from the pole or?
We anticipate they're going to be the, the same size. They might be able to be placed a little closer to the pole. One of the, two, two constraints on how far away they have to stand. One is the pole owner's requirement and the National Electric Safety Code's requirement that the pole remain climbable, even though most work is now done with bucket trucks. So a, alignment has to be able to get up that pole. So there's a six-inch standoff required for that. With these panel antennas, uh, and the topography in the Pacific Northwest, uh, we also try to allow an additional six inches so we can tilt the antennas to direct the signal around trees, down at, uh, you know, the dips in the road, that sort of thing. So, um, the, the 5G antennas, the, the designs that I've seen, they are a little closer to the pole. They would still need the six-inch standoff from, um, on a wood utility pole that the, um, the safety, National Electric Safety Code requires. On, uh, light standards, the panel antennas are exterior, but they're flush to the pole. So you would not have that, that big standoff with a light standard. We, we've got some pictures later in the deck.
Thanks.
So do these essentially operate under line of sight?
Not exactly. They propagate out and, and they propagate out, um, to deliver the signal. So wherever the antennas.
It's a straight line.
Go straight up. And so you would tilt it to, to achieve your coverage objective, but.
So more like a beam of light that might.
Exactly right.
Yes.
Exactly right. Yeah, so, some folks think that these all talk to each other and they don't. Where they're, um, each a standalone facility that is covering, uh, a radius. And those radiuses or radii, I think if I'm in science class, um, are, are designed to one ends where the next one will pick up.
Quick clarifying question, and I don't want to do a back here, but are all of these 360-degree coverage or are some of these 180, you know, that sort of coverage area?
It depends. Each one of these pan, some, some poles, we have, um, just two panel antennas. So it would be, um, kind of splitting the difference between 180 and 360, I guess.
Okay, so somewhere in between?
Somewhere in between.
Okay.
The canister antennas, um, can have a 360 range. Also, that's why we say between one and four antennas, because some directions that a pole is pointing may not need additional.
Of course, right, yeah.
It may be covered very well by a macro or it may have a far less dense neighborhood there. So, uh, so we would, it, we only put up the equipment that deals with the network need.
Right, you engineer it for what it's needed, but it could have four antennas to give it that 360 degree or it could just have one because you just need that 90-degree shine, 90-degree shine. Thank you.
Yeah.
And another for Archer Line, but don't worry, I'll have all these addresses out, um, at the end of this presentation. Now, this one's a really cool one. Uh, we move more into the decorative light standards. Uh, the photo on the right is a great contrast shot. We were able to snap a photo before the existing, uh, structure was taken down. So you can see the before and after in one shot. At the bottom, you can see the cabinet that holds all the radio equipment and at the top, there's a canister that has the antennas. Um, very, very similar to what was there originally.
Yeah, and then on the, on the left is a picture of a pole that was engineered for Pioneer Square and passed their historical design review, um, there. So we, and, and that's one that, that utilized, because it's a very dense urban area, utilized a number of smaller antenna radio combo units that ended up having far less visual mass than the, than the, the, the bigger antennas. So that actually has, I think, eight antennas on it. But the visual impact is far less than if we had put the two, two-foot by 18-inch antennas up there.
Here are some examples in other states. On the left side, uh, this, uh, pole incorporates a light standard. On the other side, it actually incorporates a banner, so you can get a dual purpose with the city.
Yep, 4G antennas and the equipment cabinets can be masked by a banner. And I noticed, I, I know that you have a number of poles that are, that are equipped for banners. Um, and there are, um, so that's a solution to hide some of the equipment on the pole as well.
I'm actually going to let Kim talk about these.
Okay, so these were, if you, if you note in the picture on the right, these are the double acorn, uh, lights in Portland. And, uh, all three carriers, T-Mobile, um, actually Sprint was at the table on that, uh, AT&amp;T and Verizon, collaborated on what, a design that we could do that all the carriers could fit their existing equipment into, um, with maybe some monicum of variation, but which would address a decorative pole solution. And so here's a, a double acorn solution and it, these are photo simulations. Uh, but just to give the city of Portland an idea of what was possible. Here again, there's maybe a better, better depiction of, um, how we, we might address a, um, a double acorn light such as, you know, the lights that you have here. And go to the next one. But another solution is a wireless pole. In Denver, um, this is a Verizon solution. They had, as you can see in the foreground of the picture on the left, a very, uh, specifically designed decorative pole. And when Verizon went into Denver, they said, "Don't touch our pole." It's not going to work. And they're also, uh, somewhat shorter as well. So Verizon designed the pole that's directly to the left of that, which is a wireless-only pole that, uh, is, has complementary design. If it was a better resolution of the picture, you'll see that, you know, the, the pole design, the color, the, um, you know, the, the design of the base were, were very complementary. And that was the solution that Denver chose, as opposed to having us locate on their decorative poles themselves.
Oh, sorry, quick question. Um, so earlier, um, you showed a complimentary, you showed, uh, I guess more of, um, you had two poles right together right before the one was taken down. And when there was, like, yes, that one, thanks. When, when, when something like that happens, who bears the cost of replacement, replacement of the pole?
The carrier does. This would be done at our cost. Yeah, and the, the pole on the, on the left went away the next day, but it was a, an opportunity to show how we could work with the designs, especially very stylized designs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at all these and the thought comes to my mind is, this is not a, um, something where you go around and you design something to attach to a pole. You guys are, sounds like you're coming up with a new pole style and you're replacing the whole light, the whole streetlight pole. Is that typical or does it just?
When we need to. Some, some like the, the less decorative Cobra heads that you'll find or those, um, the lights that are, look like a little square on the end of a pole. Those, we, we have designs where we can attach to the pole itself and, you know, and, and create, fit in with, with the visuals that are in the neighborhood. But for, we, we do understand that, that cities have, have invested a lot of money in their stylized design districts. And we don't want to go in there like the bad neighbor and, and put something ugly in there. We respect that.
Yeah, I remember maybe 10 or 15 years ago having a, of, when was, we were doing the downtown plan, a vendor came in and had a bunch of sample, big, huge streetlights and everybody looked at it and, you know, it was a big, it was a big deal because it was kind of.
The community does an enormous amount of work on, on selecting the theme and the tone of.
You would work with the local city to determine what the best way is.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, you, as mentioned in Denver, you collaborated between different, um, providers?
In Portland.
In Portland. Is that the norm? I mean, could we expect something like that in Bothell or does it depend on the size of the?
Each carrier deploys different equipment because each carrier is assigned different spectrum to operate in. And so the technical requirements of spectrum that propagates very far is different from the technical requirements for a spectrum that doesn't propagate very far at all. So size and, um, the availability of the, the, the can antenna style, the canister antenna, that will vary carrier by carrier. T-Mobile is not here tonight, but you'll see in their materials that they have a unified enclosure that they use that contains the radios and the equipment in one box, um, that they either strand mount or mount to the pole. So, um, each carrier is a little different, but what we tried to do with these photos was to kind of give a sense of, of, um, and I think that, that T-Mobile in, in this market determined that they could use a can antenna or, uh, an antenna rather than their unified enclosure on the pole. So we kind of, we were trying to work with the volume that we thought we all could expand into in the near term and do some designs that would be complementary to that. We have heavy caveats on these photos that, you know, not every carrier can, can make use of every aspect of these photos. There would be some, some difference, but this is what we would aspire to. Yeah, yes, it isn't. Yeah, and, and, and on the face of the packet, lots and lots of text. Oh, these are some other examples of wireless-only poles. Uh, they could also serve as a solution in neighborhoods that are, have very decorative or neighborhoods, we've, we've encountered some neighborhoods that have dark sky policies that are completely undergrounded. I, I think, I, I don't know if I'd want to live in one, but, but there are, um, locally, I think that there are some, some neighborhoods like that. Not in Bothell. I think Isiqua has some. But there, this would be a solution there.
This question's killing me, so I'm just going to ask it real quick. How much power is each one of these sites using approximately?
Not very much at all. Um, they, they're typically five to 25 watt radios.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then, uh, I want to expand on, on a question about the, the Portland installation. Like, that design that you show is, is, you were working with the city to design the light poles that would fit in Portland. But that would be one pole for Verizon, one pole for T-Mobile, one pole for Sprint, one pole for AT&amp;T.
Yeah, and, and typically, the pole owners we're finding only want one carrier per pole. And co-location between carriers is not really technically feasible because the sweet spot for a small cell antenna in terms of height is very different from the macro, which was higher is better. A small cell needs to be sited between, generally between 25 and 40 feet is the sweet spot. And so to put two carriers in there on a pole and achieve separation between their equipment, so there's no interference, it, no one has really worked out a solution for that yet. So we're at the, at the early stages. We're all hoping that we can achieve something like that, but it's not feasible now.
Does Verizon have projections for an approximate installation size within the downtown area for Bothell? Do they have any examples of other cities?
Oh.
Like, are we talking five poles, 50 poles? I know it said 20 to 40, but is that?
Well, AT&amp;T is in the room, so we really can't discuss that. But we, we, we can, um, when we come for our franchise agreement and, um, we will have more, more specifics there and, and be able to talk about that in a, in a more, um, uh, not as public a form.
It's definitely going to be greater than one and, and.
I think it's going to be greater than one. But don't quote me on that.
And then our, last, last question here. What is the lifespan of the equipment? Is this a 10-year life cycle, 20, 15? 3G has been around, I mean.
In terms of how long the equipment will last before it goes, let's say, bad?
Yeah.
I think the technology is going to change before the equipment goes bad and will likely upgrade the techno, uh, the technology to meet that new demand.
And so the question is when, right? Like, because if you guys are going to do all this work and, you know, we don't know how big the size is, but if, if there's going to be 50 light poles that are touched in the city of Bothell in three years, are you guys going to be back touching those 50 light poles again or is it 10, 15, 20 years?
We'll touch those again because we'll be changing out radios, not necessarily to expand the size, but just because newer and better, um, technology comes forward for deploying 4G and 5G. And so, um, typically we find on our macro sites that we're back, and I think Michael and Chris might attest to that. You know, every 18 months to two, three years for the macro sites to add some radios or swap out antennas, do things like that. Not for, not because the equipment's wearing out, but because there's, there's a better, better fix.
Yeah, I know that.
Fine tuning.
Computing is obviously moving faster and faster, but I guess what I'm just worried about is the impact. You know, macro sites are nice because they're, I don't know how many there is in the city of Bothell, but I can't imagine there's that many. And if we're going to have lots of little sites, that means lots of little impacts to residents in the city.
Yeah, and the work on a, on a, on a typical, um, an install for a small cell is generally a matter of a couple of days. It, it's not an enormous impact. And it, it would be probably much less for, um, like a radio swap out because that equipment cabinet is that accessible from the ground, would need a bucket truck, um, things like that. So, and that would, that would be a matter of hours, you know. So it isn't like a macro site that would take six months or, you know, a week to, to do that kind of work on.
Yeah, I was going to say, my, my experience, macro sites are much more impactful in terms of any, any work that has to be done on the site. And that technology has changed over time as well. The, the, the cabinets that are on the ground have gotten a lot smaller over time, uh, which has reduced the impact of that. The other thing I wanted to mention though, um, back to your original question. The franchise agreements have a sunset date on them. So those typically expire before there's a, the significant change in technology. So yes, I would anticipate that there will be some poles that will, there'll be something that's traded out in the life of the franchise. But one of the reasons for that is because technology's changing. The, what we need to do from a city standpoint changes. The franchises will also be updated then as, as we need to.
All right. So another option we actually have is strand mounting. So these are combined antenna radio units hung on the fiber strand. Uh, there is still a power disconnect mounted on the pole.
This is a little different kind of deployment. This is really, has a very limited application. Um, this is deployed in a very dense area of downtown Seattle. And it really is designed for very urban dense areas. Because I think the, the range on a strand mount is, is like 200 to 500 feet. So it's, it's not a, a good solution for a more suburban community.
What you guys experienced in changing neighborhoods, so like South Lake Union, a lot of low-rise development. Now we've got Amazon going up. Do you see a lot of gaps in your coverage from what the macro could provide that you're now infilling with the micro sites or?
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer to that. Um, we could get an answer for you on that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering with Bothell changing and the, you know, there's a lot of taller apartment buildings. If we're on the higher side of, you know, density needing.
Well, small cells are, are actually a good solution for that density because being placed in the right of way and directed into those buildings, you don't get necessarily all of the shadowing that you would get from a macro with getting taller skyscrapers in a, you know, in a, in an area. You know, that would impact the macro network, the ability to get beyond those buildings and down in. But because these are low facilities and are directed into the buildings, it's all, it's a good solution for that type of growth.
Here's, here's just some specifications on strand mount if you're really interested. And then this is a strand mount simulation of before and after, uh, very minimal visual impact. Now, here we have a 4G, 5G installation in Los Angeles. What I'd like to point out is on the left, the very top set of antennas, that's our 4G installation. And the rad center right below is our 5G installation. Right below that will be our radios. There's another version, uh, another installation in the center. And on the right-hand side, the forge is actually inside of a canister at the top.
But the panel antennas need to be exposed.
Right. Here's a, uh, another 4G, 5G install, well, actually photo sim. We weren't able to tell you where this one is currently located or to be located, but this is a very possible deployment of a 4G, 5G install that we will do in Washington on a wood utility pole. And, uh, so these are the locations of. And so these are the locations of the 15 Archer line nodes that you guys can visit in Bellevue. I have a map of where they're located as well. You also have the pictures of most of these nodes further up in the deck. There's also the two in Ballard we spoke about. They're located here. I don't have them mapped out, but I can if you need it.
And the, and the other, another good way to see a number of different kinds of small cells is to take a nice walk around being like, there are a number of different small cells that have been deployed there for, for a while. So in a very short three-mile walk, you can get a real good flavor for the different types of designs.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Oh, quick question for you, if I could. So, thank you for the presentation. So with regards to standalone new installations with, as opposed to not, I guess, co-located with PSC lines or on their poles, how does that work? Or how does that work with regards to, you know, I guess you work with the city on this, but you have another kind of pole. And I thought this is what Aaron was getting at, but I'm not sure. It might have been part of what you were. Are we going to have two poles? Are you going to have 50? I mean, you have a lot of, a lot of new poles in right of way. I mean, that, not only is it visually possibly unappealing, but the sight lines are maybe skewed a bit. And I don't know, once the pole's in the ground, I don't know, it's, it can get in the way of a lot of stuff. So I, I don't know if that's something we're going to cover, but, or if it was covered in the material, but it seems very beneficial in my mind at least to have them on a pole that's already in place.
That's our preference too.
Okay.
Given, given the opportunity to sit on an existing pole, we'll do that every time if it's feasible.
I'm sure it's a lot more affordable too, yeah.
The wood poles are low-hanging fruit. They're easy to install on, don't take a lot of, you know, a lot of engineering to do that. We have an existing agreement in place with PSC and Snowpud. So that's the easiest path forward for this. And then going on to streetlight poles is a more complicated solution. And certainly in a decorative streetlights scenario, that's even yet more complicated. So it would never be our intention, we'd never place a, a pole where we could go on an existing pole if that was an option.
Thank you.
Is there any noise associated with the operation of these?
No, they're passively cooled. There are no fans, no components whirring. All of that is, because each one of these is linked by fiber back to either a macro site or a hub. There's no need for noise.
Thank you.
Some of the ones in the more, like in the, in the Southwest and in Denver and that kind of thing, they may have some cooling functions because they get significantly more heat, but we don't, that's not a part of the design here.
I know you guys can't divulge your future plans for Bothell, but it would be interesting to know if the existing utility poles between all the different providers, do we think we could handle what we're looking at? Or, you know, what percentage we're going to have to go on light poles? Because I think there's a big difference. No one looks at a wood utility pole as an architectural feature. I don't really care necessarily what you hang on them. I mean, just from my personal perspective. But when we're talking about something that was like architecturally created specifically for a street, as Bruce took it, mentioned, then that's a little bit different.
Well, you have a lot of wood poles. So that's good. It, it's a matter of availability and location. Those are the two drivers. So, you know, as I said, in driving, you know, down Bothell way, you've got, you know, decorative lights, but you have some wood poles that are like a quarter block off, off the main drag. You know, that's a good solution. Two blocks away, maybe not workable in terms of the, the range of the antennas. So it's very specific in that regard. But I know you have a number of, of wood poles.
Okay. Because unless we could find some sort of standard for our light poles, which all providers could use, to me, it doesn't make sense from a design standpoint to have, you know, seven different options on one light pole. I mean, I'd rather at that point just do a separate individual small wireless installation, though I know it clutters up our, our streets.
Someone mentioned something about batteries as a part of these as well. And so is a portion of this run on a battery? Is that a backup or?
No batteries on these. There specifically are no battery backups on the small cells. We made a design choice that we would not back them up at all.
Okay.
So in the event of a power outage, they do go dark and your capacity and your streaming video and that sort of thing is, is, will go down in that circle for that period of time. But you still will have the coverage for the macro network.
Okay. So on a, an existing pole installation, you're pulling power from, from the pole?
Yeah, we have an agreement with PSC for flat rate power, so we don't have to put a meter on the ground. The same thing with Snowpud, flat rate. So, so that's not an issue.
So you're pulling power. So what do you need for this? You need power?
Power and fiber.
Fiber, okay. And so you're looking obviously for places where there is fiber.
Oftentimes, because we, we need dark fiber, which is, which is the same provider, the same at each end of the fiber strand, we use third-party providers like Wave and Zayo and Comcast and Frontier to supply fiber for us to the, to these poles. One of the benefits is, is that what we found kind of just anecdotally is that while they're laying the fiber to certain, to supply fiber to our poles, they also do their own commercial deployment in the, in the neighborhood and will end up sometimes supplying fiber to neighborhoods that don't have that yet. So that's a.
Okay, so there's an impetus for providers to bring fiber if it's not already there?
Yeah, we, we would need to bring our fiber if, if it's not there. We, each of these poles would have a separate application by a fiber provider. Once we get the land use application all, all settled, then typically Verizon then bids the fiber out at that point because you need to have a specific location to have the fiber provider.
Okay. So there's a little more to this than just sticking a can on a, on a pole. So if you've got a situation where you need to, you need to do a new pole, then you're bringing, you're bringing power underground from somewhere, right? So you're going to be ripping up some sidewalk and.
Now typically there is power in the, I mean, in the, in the right of way, or at least some access to it. But yes, we would have to bring a line to the pole.
Yeah. I mean, in downtown, we're, hopefully most of our power's underground. So you'll be pulling it from, from somewhere. You'll be ripping up sidewalks.
Well, we, we try to micro trench to the extent that we can and not actually, you know, do a, a deep board and try to find, find power. There are some, some less impactful ways to, to move those lines and to run those lines. But yes, we would, we would do that, but we would also fix everything. And we also respect the city's desire to notify everybody who could possibly want to get into that sidewalk that day that, that it's going to be open so that we can coordinate with, with other users.
And that, that work would trigger right-of-way permit through the city. So we would have to process that in the same timeframe. But again, they'd have to bring all those plans in, and we would treat them just like we would any other work that's done in the right-of-way by a, a third party.
But it would be compressed in terms of the process?
In terms of the process, yes. But we already have standards in place of what they would be required to, anything they, you know, if they break it, they got to fix it, that, that sort of thing.
So you also mentioned, hey, wood poles a block off the main street is great. Half block, block, whatever.
Yeah, not necessarily a whole block.
Okay. I guess what came to my mind at that point was that, you know, we're, our downtown is, is growing and you probably, you know, have noticed or heard or whatever. And so in three years, that pole might be gone, you know, because of development. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know what precautions you would take or what, what provisions you would make for, you know, if that goes into the design process or whatever. But, you know, when that, when that pole goes away, then, then there's got to be.
And so do we. Our, our franchise with the city would require us to, to remove our equipment from that wood pole when the wood pole went away.
Come in with a new.
And relocate onto something, something nearby. But three years in small wireless time.
Yeah.
Is just fine. If we can get something deployed and on air for three years, it's worth having the, the prospect of relocation down the road.
I guess what the, what it may point to though is we may end up having some more of these standalone poles. You know what I mean? I guess unless you can coordinate with, with new light poles or, or whatever.
Well, and that, that wood utility pole might become a light pole when it's, when, when it's retired, which, you know, would give us the opportunity to decide on, on or within that pole.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Overall, it's exciting to get better coverage in Bothell. So sorry about all the design questions, but we're excited. One quick question. You mentioned we can't paint the 5G antenna yet. Maybe one day they'll work with materials that are different color?
Yeah, and Vendre, you might speak to the film that they're.
Yeah, there's, we can color the, the film that the panel is made of. So we can color that to match. But in terms of screening or putting anything in front of as a shrouding, that's not something we can do at this point.
Okay, so we can color it black or whatever. Nice, okay.
Yeah, you just can't put a, a can around it or, or some sort of a, a cover over it.
I, okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, is this in the same folder? I'm just going to assume all of the presentations are here. PC, this might be ours. Oh, oh, look, the one that says AT&amp;T. That might be us.
That's it.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Greg Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group. I'm a consultant for AT&amp;T tonight. I think my colleagues at Verizon have done an excellent job describing the concept of a small cell network and the different types of installations. So I'll keep my presentation brief and give you an example of the kinds of facilities that AT&amp;T uses. So there are three broad categories of small cell installations that we focus on. Verizon brought up the strand mount, but I haven't seen any designs proposed yet. That could change, but these are the ones AT&amp;T is focusing on right now. So decorative poles, we have many customizable options. There's a degree of flexibility. If there's a purpose-built pole, sky's the limit. We can make it look like whatever you want. But if we're going on an existing decorative pole, it is a little bit harder. I know there are a couple of candelabras, I hope I pronounced that right, or crowns you can put on top of the pole. Seattle originally leaned that way, but ultimately it comes down to the city, what kind of decorative pole attachment you would want to see. Some of them want to see the equipment down in the base of the pole. So like I said, it's very, it's flexible there. But the most degree of flexibility is if there's a purpose-built pole. And then there's the steel streetlight standards. We can have boxes that you bolt to a pole and have on an existing pole. I think that was a question from the commission earlier. And then we can have poles that entirely enclose the equipment from top to bottom. We have an example there. It's, it wouldn't work for 5G, but for 4G, it works. But it looks different than a normal installation. Again, you'll get to see that. And of course, we have the wooden utility poles. So here are some sample designs for decorative light poles. This is a photo simulation. This would be down in Oregon. So I picked one that looked something similar here. So you notice that we have the antennas, a omnidirectional canister antenna. So if I slip up and say can antenna, that's what I mean. And then we have the power box and radios on the side behind there. And I can, I have the individual files on a flash drive. So if you want to zoom in and take a closer look, we have that option. And feel free to interrupt me with questions if you.
Greg, how much taller is that pole extension?
Oh.
On that particular application, do you think?
I'd be eyeballing it here, but AT&amp;T likes to have our sweet spot at about 30 feet. So if you eyeball it, I'd say went, oh, I'm open to guesses here. Yeah, sorry, I'd have to eyeball it. Eight, an extra eight or six feet on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the code, the interim code has limitations on how much taller can be added to an existing pole. I think it's 10 feet.
And that's why I was asking later, is that going to be allowable or not?
Since you said interrupt, I'll interrupt real quick. Why would you install a 4G-only antenna today? Like, why wouldn't you future-proof, future-proof for a 5G antenna? Is, is there a purpose?
The answer is kind of funny because if we were to future-proof by installing early 5G technology before we need it, when we actually do need it, the technology would probably be not what we anticipated we would need. I have difficulty looking two years into the future, five years, it's anyone's guess. So it's not cost efficient to install 5G equipment before we know exactly what we need. As for the reason we're installing 4G equipment now, we still have the issue of capacity. It's not a coverage solution. It's, it's the spinning wheel of death where we have, McMenamins is full to the brim with bachelor parties and all sorts of merriment, but nobody can upload the photos because everyone's doing the same thing. So that's the kind of problem we're looking to solve with 4G small cells right now. And for 5G, we would essentially take what's already there and try and retrofit it to accommodate more.
So really what you're trying to do right now is just tactically address the problem?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm not going to call it a Band-Aid because it does help, but it's, obviously we'd like to have 5G now, but it's, it's very hard to.
No, I mean, stepping back, right, looking at some of the earlier photos of the, the overall macro installations, there are spots, like Popkinia I wrote down is a great, great example, right? On Friday, football game, yada, 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 totally busy. AT&amp;T is, and Verizon, and everyone is probably looking at that saying, if I could put a small cell there, that's going to help my Friday night traffic. And it's going to help my customers and that's going to help, help everybody. So, so I, a Band-Aid solution is the wrong term, but it's a tactical approach to plug the holes that are plaguing all of us.
That's exactly right. And then there's another option there. So it's based on what kinds of design priorities you'd like to set. This is one where we essentially make the, the pole thicker instead of having the equipment boxes on the outside. So you notice we have the equipment in a box. And then this one, we just put it inside the pole. So I have plenty of other design standards and I think I'm going to plug in my flash drive and show in some, what did you call those? The dual kind of, it's acorns, dual acorn design. I have one of those. Plenty of other designs. I have a 36-slide manufacturer presentation if you'd like to go through that, but I have a feeling I'll just be brief here. So the Kent node, this is a photo simulation for Kent. This would be a existing streetlight pole. This would be an already 30-foot tall pole. We'd just stick an antenna on top of that and have the equipment box about mid-height. And this would be an internal design for a streetlight standard. You notice you have the swing arm, the, why, why must, why is my brain? Is the, here, luminaire, about halfway, two-thirds of the way up. So you notice how the pole got a lot thicker there and we would have to essentially replace the pole. It's, this isn't the kind of thing where we can go in and just put a shroud around the pole. This would be an entirely new pole. And as my colleagues at Verizon brought up, the local utility providers here don't allow us to do mid-pole installations, but this is an example of what we could do here. Have an omnidirectional antenna, but in the communication space. And then you have a very well painted to match coax cable and power running, tool from the equipment box to the antenna. And whoop, there it goes. Okay, well, it's decided that my presentation is over. There we go. So for local poles, what we would do is, the most likely scenario is we would take the wooden pole and strengthen it to meet structural standards and have a few extra feet on top of that and have an antenna on the top of the pole. But it would look, design and aesthetics-wise, quite similar to that. You just move the antenna to the top of the pole. And that's all I have. And if you'd like to see the dual acorns, I have that as well.
Thank you, Greg. Does anybody have any questions? Any more questions for Greg before we kind of just jump into study session discussion? And so I guess maybe we'll have the opportunity to ask either Greg, Devendra or Kim additional questions later, or should we, you know? I want to thank you for the, for the presentation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
By all means, feel free to ask any questions or email. I'll be happy to respond.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be at all your meetings too.
Okay. Oh, great, thanks.
Question for staff. References made to Bellevue's regulations. In a prior life, I worked under some of those and I know how rigorous they can be. How's the city's proposal compared to what Bellevue has in place?
I'll let you know when we prepare it. We're, here's, here's essentially what we're doing. We're still gathering a lot of information. I've looked at a lot of different jurisdictions and the approaches they have taken. And generally, the community-wide poles is not as difficult to accommodate as our unique downtown facilities. That's going to be more of a challenge than it is the, you know, the pretty normal looking, you know, you know, pole with a Cobra head, swing arm. That's going to be a little easier. And so that's one of the things that I know a lot of the jurisdictions actually are working on now as we are as well. So it's been a little bit tough to kind of find that sweet jurisdictional example, but that's one of the things I'm working on as we speak, actually.
And, and Bruce has been looking at Bellevue.
And, and Bruce has been looking at Bellevue specifically as one of the cities, because they did recently adopt their design standards, I think, particularly for the downtown. I don't know if they applied them to any other areas, but I know that downtown has some fairly stringent design standards that apply to buildings and landscaping and signage and those types of things. So we're looking at that, but it's a different, it's a different design aesthetic in downtown Bellevue than it is in downtown Bothell. So in terms of the types of design that they look at, the types of things they look at, we can learn from that, but the standards themselves may not apply.
And feel free, any comments or jump in with questions, or, we have quite a few pages here to go through, if we want to go through it, or we can just go ahead and ask some questions that you came across through reading. Roger?
I don't know that it's worth going through the page by page, but one of the things I, I guess I was thinking about as we're talking about these, you know, the, the changing in technology and the vacation of a pole, and we're going to go move somewhere else. And maybe this is already covered, but I guess what you don't want is you don't want a bunch of old empty poles that used to be small cell facilities that are just, they just took the equipment out and left, and so now you've got all these poles. And so I don't know if that's, if that's already, you know, covered or whatever, but I, I don't think we want our downtown to become, you know, like a graveyard for these things. So just food for thought.
And, and that's a very good point. And I, I'll, I'll look a little more deeply into this, but my, my understanding is that I think our franchise agreement would cover that type of situation. Certainly, as, as the question I think you brought up earlier that Ms. Allen answered, if the pole goes away for some reason, then the small cell facility also goes away. That's in the code and would also be in the franchise agreement. In the case of a pole that, purpose-built, I think is how Mr. Bush referred to it, that it's specific for the small cell, that's all it contains, if that technology goes away, then I think the franchise agreement would also cover that situation where they would have to remove not just the, the equipment, but the pole that it's on as well.
And replace it with a standard, kind of what was already there?
Well, if it was, if it's replacing, if it was just for the small cell, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be replaced. It would be just, just be removed. If it's on an existing pole that has other things on it, then whatever's there, if it's still functional, that pole would remain for that purpose.
So like the example where we had two sitting next to each other, the old one hadn't been taken out before, that was the standard. And then you had the new one that was beefed up and jerked around a little bit. And, and so then you've got all your new stuff on this new pole, and your old one gets thrown away or whatever.
Get taken out.
Maintenance yard. And then all of a sudden, technology changes, and whoever decides, well, we, you know, not only don't we need it in this particular location, but we're, like, we don't need it here anymore. So let's just kind of take our stuff out. And then you've got a pole that kind of looks like your standard poles, but it's, it's, it's kind of jacked up, and it's got boxes, and it's thicker or whatever. So do we, you know, do we have to replace that back with a standard pole? So that weren't, you know what I mean? So just something to think about.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. That's a whole different scenario than I, than I was thinking about. So yeah, we would need to address that.
Also, can we make sure that the removal of pole also restores the area around the pole? I'm thinking of, of, if, just removing the pole is not removing the pole, like, the base should be replaced by what was there beforehand. Like, imagine if there was a sidewalk, you wouldn't want four bolts sticking up where the pole once was and the wires hanging out. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, and I think our public works standards cover any situation like that, because they would still have to get, even for the removal of the pole, they'd have to get a right-of-way permit to take it out. So that, they would look at that sort of thing and make sure that there was restoration that was required.
I wasn't trying to speak for everyone when I said I didn't care about the design standards with the standard utility pole, but does anybody necessarily care about, like, what are we trying to solve with this particular installation? Is there anything that you guys are worried about from a city standpoint that we need to take into account with a wood utility pole?
I think in the downtown, it really has to do with the overall aesthetics that we're trying to create. We don't want a lot of clutter. So these are smaller facilities for the most part. So it's looking at making sure that anything that does get added to the poles, because there's already a lot on, particularly the, the older-style wooden poles, to make sure that we're not just adding to the visual clutter, that there's something being done to help minimize that. I think for those in particular, that, to me, that would be the main issue that we'd be trying to, to address there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Michael, on that comment, because it, it does matter to me what goes on the poles and having tried to have some kind of lack of clutter, I guess. And so, um, yeah, this is good that we have this one right here. So I don't know if it, if we talked about it in here, but there's different types of installations. There's the, the box that's, or I don't know what the actual term for it is, but right at, on the concrete, right at the ground level. There, you know, there's, there's, there's a door, and you can, you can work on it there. This would be, I guess, more of a new standalone structure rather than the wood pole. But how, let's, let's keep it to the wood pole at this point. Do we have any recommendations in here? I don't know if I came across it with how low one could go, like on this one, there's the, I guess, a canister or something, the transmitter's, you know, maybe, you know, 12, 15 feet up. And I don't know, I guess in my mind, it'd be kind of nicer if they were a little bit higher up. But I also know the higher up they are, the harder they are to work on, so do we have recommendations from that?
Well, and as, as I think all of the presenters alluded to, the, the pole owner, or the utility in this case, has specific standards that they will apply. It has to be so far from the, from any electrical wires, so, and certain locations and distances so that they can work on the utilities that are on the pole. So I, I don't know that, I know we have some standards in terms of size and in terms of the height of the pole that can be added to it, and the blending, the concealment of not just the, the antenna, but also the, any, any of the wires and things that are running to that. I don't know that we regulate the location on the pole so much, because we don't own the pole.
Right, okay. So we maybe don't have a whole lot of say with regards to how far down they can go?
We could look into that, yeah. Because, well, there's certainly an issue from, from a public safety standpoint, if it's on a sidewalk. We don't want it so low that somebody could walk into it.
Yeah.
Those types of standards we already have in place, and those, you know, just like I said at the beginning, anything that we would apply to any utility in the right-of-way would also apply to these facilities.
Okay.
So if we have that standard already, and I'm assuming we do, but I would have to double-check that, those would also apply.
Okay, thank you.
We'll follow up on that.
And as far as not policing, but kind of staying on top of what our recommendations are, I guess that would just, that bit that falls upon, I guess, either a staff or a complaint, if one of the providers were to kind of fall out of compliance with whatever, you know, we decided or the agreement, right? So, okay.
I think that would be covered under the franchise agreement as well. Yeah, there, there would, they have to maintain the pole, and that's also going to be incumbent upon the pole owner.
So feel free to jump in with any other comments or questions. If anybody has any others. I had some buried in here somewhere. Do the commissioners, do you guys need a little bit more time to go through the materials, or do you feel like you've had a time to voice any questions or concern you have for the study session?
And again, our main purpose this evening was really information and education for, for all of us. And I, I want to thank the presenters. This was,
Absolutely.
I learned a lot tonight. I've been learning a lot about this just over the last few months, getting up to speed on all of it, so this was very helpful. But just to make sure that you've had your questions answered in terms of the types of equipment, the types of, the aspects of design that we can and cannot regulate, the kinds of things that you would like us to look at as, as we draft the regulations. I say "we," I'm looking at Bruce as I say that. Because we will be coming back to you at your next meeting in three weeks with a set of draft design standards, basically, design standards and regulations that will fit into the code.
And those design standards that we're looking at, are they more as what applies to the downtown district or citywide?
Primarily the downtown district. If there's something that comes out of it that, that you want to see citywide, we can look at that as well. I'll need to talk to, to our attorney about that in terms of the timing, if that's something we have to include in the April 14th adoption, or if that would go into the permanent ordinance. But certainly, anything that's not in here, and again, the, the main part of the code to look at in terms of small cell design starts in 12, 11, 100. So if you look through those regulations and there's something you see that you think should be covered that's not in there, we definitely want to, want to try to add that. And we can work with the attorneys to figure out how best to fit that in and when that needs to get fit in. So if not during this round, then certainly for the permanent ordinance.
Okay, because I was kind of touching on what Aaron said earlier, of course, Canyon Park or the rest of the town, you know? Be interested to know, you know, if and when we'll even need to, but address the concerns of the rest of the city.
Yeah. Canyon Park would have to come later, after we've adopted some specific design standards for that, for that area. So as we do sub-areas or, or smaller areas, and we put design standards in place, and we can provide that, that connection to the small cell and why we need to regulate those as we would any other utility in, in the right-of-way, then we would add those to the code at that time. That's my understanding.
Okay.
But if there's something that's citywide that goes beyond what we have here, we can talk about that as well now.
Okay.
Well, and sort of along those lines, one of the things I think is important is there be some consistency. So when you look down a road and, you know, there's a pole, a pole, a pole, and when they're all the same, they kind of blend in. But if there's like three or four different things, then it starts to look a little visually disjointed, disjointed. Yeah, in downtown, I think you're going to cover that through the design standards. But when you get out of downtown, I'd like you to think about that, that just looking on a long, so like, look up 104th or 100th, whole, you know, line of poles, and you've got, what, three, four different vendors. And if everyone's somewhat different, I think it will have more of a visual impact than if there's a consistency, and then it'll kind of blend into the background, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce something, which is, a lot of our focus, I've seen on the year that I've been on Planning Commission, has been the downtown area, but there's a lot more to Bothell than downtown, so I, I just want to protect the rest of Bothell in, in these regulations. I, I liked what Commissioner Kirnaman said, which is, that's completely valid. You drive down a road, you see five different poles, if there are five different vendors on them, you're going to start paying attention to it. So I think it's just important that we, we think about how the design of this looks throughout the whole city. One question I wrote down is, you know, I, I imagine there are other city-owned lights outside of the downtown area, so what happens when a vendor comes to us about that down the road, and how are we going to deal with that? So I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking ahead to those questions. And, and I understand we are in a tight timeline, so I'm not saying this is a March, February 27th requirement, but let's not forget this. Let's, let's get this dealt with soon.
Okay, understood. We've been working with Public Works on this as well, because obviously, they're, they're tuned in to all of the, all the poles in the city and what's on them and, and the different owners of those. My understanding is the city owns very few poles throughout the city. So, and, and I think it's just a matter of time before even the ones that we currently own will get turned over to a utility. So for the most, for the most part, even now, I think we're going to be dealing with that third party, the, the utility provider, either PSE or Snohomish PUD, and working with them and their standards. And they're, they're looped into this discussion as well. So we're, we're working with them as we go through this. But your point is well-taken, and, and we'll be working with the attorneys to get a better handle on what we do regulate and what we can regulate outside of our, our special design district, the downtown. Because you're right, it does, it does matter throughout the city, and, and we don't mean to say it doesn't. Just right now, our focus is on the, the special design area that we have in the downtown.
And I'll just add, like, it's nice knowing that PSE and Snohomish County PUD have their own standards, and that's, that's important. But I think ultimately, we're the people for, for the city of Bothell. So working with them to ensure that our residents are happy with, with what's being deployed, I think is, is my main impetus right now. That's what I'm looking for, like, like, and I mean, PSE is, is, is a large organization that they have to think about this a lot more than, than we do. But let's, let's make sure that what they do is good for us. And, and not just PSE, but Snohomish County PUD or any other third party.
Right. Yeah, absolutely, because their, their focus is on the functionality. Those, that's what their standards are about, you know, the distance, the separation, those types of things. And we're looking at it from a different, different perspective and for different needs.
I noticed tonight we were concentrating on the downtown area. As we expand out, Bothell is a city with a lot of wonderful trees. It's interesting, I just caught something earlier on that we talked about with regards to site and sightlines, or, you know, how these things are projected. So what is, I guess, when you're working out what you're going to bring, bring back to us, I guess, you know, for power lines and stuff like that, there's, it's a little bit different. Like, these poles right now are basically just directing power, you know? But now we have this completely different element now, this turning into 360 degrees, projecting out. I hope there's provisions in there to, you know, you know, protect trees, with the exception of, you know, them falling on the lines. But I, I hope that precedence of a project, a projection from one of these small cells wouldn't take precedence over a tree. And I, I know there's some, there was, they were showing the one with regards to Ballard and the deciduous trees. We have a lot of, a lot of big evergreen trees here, and so outside of downtown, I can see that being a very significant issue.
We'll, we'll talk to the attorneys about that as well.
Okay, great.
So process question, yeah. We have here a draft ordinance, yet you're referring to drafting an ordinance. So what, what are we looking at?
Actually, that is the interim ordinance that has been adopted.
Okay, the interim adopted ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then your drafting changes this, which we'll see for the next meeting.
Yes, primarily, primarily around the design district is what our, our main focus is going to be. We're also going to look at some of the items that we've heard from the commission this evening as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
And then we'll get to revisit all of the rest of it for the permanent ordinance, and that has to be done by June 14th.
So we'll be talking about this a bit?
Yes, we will.
All right, do commissioners have any other, anything else they want to talk about with regards to this? Okay, great. Again, really want to thank Greg Devendra and Kim for coming out tonight. I know these meetings aren't necessarily always the most fun things to come to, pretty much, but you guys gave really good presentations, and I certainly learned a lot more than what I needed before I came in. I appreciate that. So I guess we'll wrap up the study session with that. Old business, any old business step from staff tonight? No. Reports from staff? Deputy Mayor. Oh, Deputy Mayor.
Good thing you weren't at an auction.
No staff reports today?
No, just that we have tentatively scheduled the public hearing on the draft regulations for this for the 27th. So we will have that to you. If that changes, certainly we'll let you know. We're also working, the other thing I wanted to mention is, we will be going to the city council on February 19th with the 2019 planning docket. That was something we, we reviewed with you last time and got your input on. We're sharing that with your input with the council, as well as the staff's recommendation for the work program for 2019. So we will, we may be able to bring that back to you on the 27th. If not, we'll bring it back to you the first thing in March to let you know what, what direction we got from the council on that.
Okay, great.
And our new commissioner, newest commissioner that, that's filling the vacant seat, I think Bruce has already been in contact with him, so hopefully he'll be able to make that meeting. We'll get him up to speed on that. And we'll also have an orientation for both of our new commissioners on the Planning Commission, including Mr. Kerd, as well as our two new landmark preservation board members before April 1st, when they will, they will take the seat. So currently, we're planning two meetings in March as well.
Okay, great. And then we have for the shorelines board meeting, I know I'm going to attend, and I think Kevin's going to attend, and was there somebody else? Just the two of us?
I think we had a third, didn't we?
My recollection was there were three. Of course, that's the,
But only two, you had to attend?
We can only take three, but, yes.
We can only take three, but, yes, two would be.
I think I responded as available.
Oh. Oh, no, that's great, if.
And I think that's the February eleventh.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, that'd be great.
Or is that the?
Yeah.
February eleventh.
Monday, the eleventh?
Next Monday.
Okay.
Because they've already adopted the minutes, you can't change that.
Did you want to be there, Roger?
No, no, that's fine.
No, because.
All I said was I responded, he, he was asking.
Oh, because, yeah, if you want to be there, we'd love to have you there, so.
I'll check my calendar, right?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, cool.
So if you could just let Dave Boyd know if you will be attending, just so that we can make sure we, we don't have a quorum, or if we do, we.
Yeah, let's just, let's just say for now, no, because then there's three going right now, and it's just something like that. Is that right?
I think we have two.
Just us two? He's not going?
Yeah. And, and that's fine, three is not a requirement, we just wanted to open it up to anyone who wanted to attend, so.
Awesome, have you there? Let's see. Oh, and just, and then, so is that, that's finished? So I guess the report for myself, with regards to emails, it's, I know it's tougher with our, the requirements of not being able to be on a mobile device, so just maybe a reminder to all the commissioners that maybe, make sure you check in at least every couple of days just to check your emails, because we'll get, and staff's always trying to coordinate dates, and it'll be a little bit easier as we get a full set of commissioners. But it's been hard to make sure we get a quorum, so we always want to make sure that we're meeting, and so. Staff, I know staff takes a lot of time putting this together, so just make sure you check in your emails every couple of days, at least.
I've noted, I need to be a little more diligent, because when it goes to the group, when somebody responds, it shows as red in my inbox. So I'm not seeing unread mail, yeah. And this happened twice to me. This last one didn't show as unread when I opened it, and then I looked, and it did, I was on there and down in the string, but it didn't show unread for me, so.
Could you send a help desk request on that? Because there may be a setting on your email account, or maybe something that can be done on the city side of that. But if you could let them know about that, they may be able to, to fix that.
Sure. First time I thought it was me, I just missed it. But this last one, I did look into it. Yeah, it was shown as red, and it was a chain that I hadn't opened.
Great. Any other member reports? Or without a motion to adjourn?
Seconded? Well, oh, sorry.
Yes, please, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.